Great, thank you.
Yeah.
All right, much delayed opening of the Board of Selectmen's Special Meeting for our Capital Budget Workshop. And thank you, we have members of the Board of Finance who are in attendance as well. And appreciate that. First up on the agenda is Public Works, Tom. Yes, sorry, hold on, Tom. Charles, Richard, and the budget will lead us.
Okay. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice in all.
Okay. First up, Public Works, Tom.
Good morning. All right, to start off the Capitol for the year 2023, going to 27. We have a new sweeper that we had put in for that's going to replace the the 2007 Elgin Sweeper that we have now. These are a high wear piece of equipment as it is, and in the last couple of years, this machine, because we don't really have a great way of washing this machine down, has taken a lot of wear, so we're looking at 280,000 as a replacement for that piece of equipment. That should still pretty much hold as far as being enough money for that particular piece. Any questions on that?
Yes, Tom. How many sweepers do we have?
We have two sweepers. And we definitely need them, where it's still even with two sweepers, it usually takes us five and a half months to sweep it down.
And that's running to got two, two staff members out there full time for that five and a half months.
That's right, because also in between that, we also have to do the chip seal prep too, so that takes a little bit of time too.
Got it, thank you. Any other questions on that particular item? It's essential.
Yeah, we talked about it last year, we expected this, so yeah.
All right, Tom.
So does the 2007 machine become the backup or?
No, we would. Go ahead.
Well, I just wonder if the 2007 is the newest one in your fleet at this point, or do we have a newer one?
Yeah, we have 48, which is newer, couple of years newer.
Okay, so this is replacing the oldest machine in our fleet of sweepers?
That it is, and it will have a trade in value, we don't know that value yet, but it will have a trade in value.
Okay. So the calculation would not be, you know, 13 or 14 years of the lifespan of the machine necessarily?
That's right, I mean, these machines here, I figure if you get 12 years out of them, you got a lot. Because they're a high maintenance machine as it is, a lot of parts, especially with the salt now that we use on the roads, the amount.
About years to a quarter of a million dollars, that's expensive.
Interestingly enough, at the Safe Streets Task Force Readout on Wednesday, that was it? There were several comments made about particularly cycling and walking, having the sides of the roads cleared. So it came up just the other night.
What kind of lifespan, what would we expect if we were able to wash these machines down? And not only this machine, but all the trucks on a regular basis?
You'd definitely be definitely saving years, you know what I mean? Because here's the issue with a lot of these new high tech machines now, they have different solenoids, everything located, and a lot of them are exposed, all your contact points on those things are exposed to the salt. So you get stuff and everything is contained so tightly that the salt makes its way up into some grooves that maybe not don't even get washed, you know what I'm saying? The water doesn't penetrate. I'm not happy with a lot, we've done some work with our machines as it is, as far as making boots, you know, rubber boots and stuff like that, that can, you know, cover somebody's issue areas. But, you know, when you're sweeping up, as everybody knows, salt never goes away. You know, there's always a residual amount left, and it it just draws all moisture to contact spots.
I think Charlie's point might be getting to the fact that several years ago, we had authorized an expenditure for a wash bay. And to date, we still haven't pulled the trigger on that location wise.
A little new property on there, hopefully we're working towards it.
Yeah, exactly. So the question is, would we put one in at the old Public Works facility with the capacity to move some of those components or any of those components? So Tom, I don't know if you want to address that?
At this point here, I would need, we had a particular area picked out down here, but there's an interference now with a trailer that's there that's needed by Park and Rec. Once that trailer was moved out of the way, whatever, then there is a a spot that we already had variants set up, set four or five, so we could make it work.
Great. Tom, we anticipate, hopefully you're anticipating that that trailer will be out of there in a matter of months. So I, because we're with the 50 driveway property that we acquired, I think you're aware of this, that they're looking to rehab the upstairs to create the office space for the Public Works, and that trailer will disappear.
Okay, yeah. Well, once, so once that happens, then we could start to move on it.
Great, all right, anything else on the sweeper? All right, Tom, the other stuff, please.
Okay. We put in for a new curb machine. It is needed, we're, we've been trying to braise some of the molds and stuff that from that fit the old machine. It's really done its job, the old machine is probably 20 years old. And we've done a lot of work to it, spent some money on the auger system and braising. So the new machine would be $11,000. It also is able to work both sides, which our existing machine cannot do. So, and I also, I would, I need molds with that, new molds, an extra mold. Because when we do the curb line here in Guilford, they have the old style Cape Cod, which has a chamfer to it. They have the newer style Cape Cod that's less of a chamfer. And then we have our old style six inch curb that you see mostly through town, so that's three different molds that are needed when we set out for a machine. So we were looking, we're figuring, when we were looking into this.
Could we standardize?
Tom, regardless of the number, the number of different molds, the machine itself is in need of replacement, regardless of how many molds we use, right?
That's exactly right, the machine itself is like 20 years old, so. And even when we got it, it wasn't new, so. We've been using that, and we've had breakdowns with it, I had to borrow from Killenworth at one point in order to continue our curving.
Okay, any other questions on the curving? All right, next up.
Okay, Bobcat planer, it's an attachment that goes to the Bobcat. It's $19,000, it's a heavy duty attachment that's basically oscillates. And we can move up and down. The reason why I wanted this is because I looked at a lot of the issues that we have going through town now, we have center line issues, which the center line is opening up because the shoulders have been saturated. And when you get freeze thaw, it draws from the center cracking the center of the road. It's hard to make a fix on that because all the paving was done, the binder and the top coat were in the same seam. We tried to switch that now, what we're doing with any new paving, we will be making a lap so that we take that part away. But the existing and a bunch of spots in this town, plus the fact that we have to do a lot of patchwork on some of the utility trenches and stuff like that. This planer will allow us to plane instead of digging out the asphalt and replacing everything new. It will allow us to replain a joint. So we can actually make wing joints around the utilities trenches that we have. So basically, when you pave it, it overlaps and it holds on to the existing pavement, making it a stronger bond. And then exactly with that center line, I see the only way of really efficiently doing it is to mill it first like that in a lap over that joint and then pave it. So that will make like a T joint over it, which would hold a lot better. And then we would use tack with that, so that's the reason why I was looking at it, and you could probably say that I could probably rent this. And I think that we can. But the bottom line was, every time that you need something, everybody else needs it, and you never end up being able to get it. I tried to get it last year, and they said they had one, but I couldn't get it, it was already. What's that?
That's it, Tom, you mean like on a rental basis?
Yes, yeah, so rental, but you know, Bobcat, one thing about us getting our Bobcat loader over here, there's actually 70 attachments to that. So on some attachments, you know, that you're going to use randomly, yes, the best, the best thing is, is rent it. But on this particular thing, I need the ability because of time and, you know, switching crews around and like that. I need the ability to have that when I need it. And that's the reason why before we bought a roller, because yes, we could rent a roller, we were spending money on the roller, we could never get it when we needed it. It became a time based thing, and that was the best thing that we did, getting that roller, we use it all the time. So that's what I got, I'm saying on that, and so that's $19,000 for that unit.
Presumably you're extending the life of some of these roads?
Exactly. And it, it gives versatility for a lot of these spots that we can do gutters, we can do the center line. And then we can just, we can adjust to just what we need. So it's going to save time, it's actually going to do a better job than when we just go and patch something. Because there's no real bond to that.
Guys, anybody else, questions on that device? All right, next up, Tom.
All right, our regular drainage account that we have, it's $25,000 that we're using at this point. And we do use that, it's for pipe, all the pipe that we get, all the concrete structures, tops. And just to let you know, like this year, if we do briar wood, there's 40 tops that need to be acquired at probably a price of, well, last we looked, for $420 apiece. So that account will go pretty quickly. We notice also, I'm doing a job up on Bullard Drive right now. 600 feet of drainage up there and trying to reclaim the pipe back at this point, it's almost double the price at this point, and I'm waiting two and a half months to get it. So there's going to be issues coming up later on as far as pricing and availability of product. So this account is very important for us.
That we've been funding at 25,000 a year, and it looks like you're projecting that out at least through 2026.
I was just going to ask, I think it probably needs to go through 2027.
27.
Yes, yes, it definitely needs to go to 2027, and it may need, at some point, it may need to be increased, like I said, as far as the amount of the pricing that I've seen lately.
Right. And then the last up, vehicle maintenance equipment?
Yes, that, yes, $25,000 for garage equipment that we're going to, when we talked about this, these are different units. One of the units is an emissions restoration system that for hydrocarbons and stuff like that, now you know that we handle the police department and all them, so I'm looking to expedite, you know, some of the time that we, we deal with this stuff here, these machines, you can set them up, they're very compact as it is. They have different mixtures in them for cleaning EGR valves and intakes and the whole emission systems. And the best thing about it is you can set these things up, they can be doing the work as far as not only drawing out, you know, fluids and stuff like that, that we have to have, but also replacing fluids at the same time without the guy actually spending the time doing it. He could go on to something else, why that's timed out. So there's three pieces of equipment. Basically, all that do the same type of stuff, but they're different, you know, you need a different machine for each one and different adapters. But I wanted one for emissions, one for coolant, and one for brake service, and I definitely feel that these will save us a lot of time, and that's exactly what we need here is to try to expedite, you know, moving stuff out of here. There's also within that was computer scanners that we need to get newer ones, the ones we have now can't be updated. So we're looking in, plus I have younger guy, a couple of younger guys here now that are very computer savvy. So, you know, with software and stuff like that, that will also help increase our time of moving the units out of here. And the last thing that I put in there was, we're really running out of storage, as everybody knows. So heavy duty steel cabinets that are safe for both flammables. Looking at five units that I would need there, they run usually about six foot six by 48 by 24 deep. So that'd be probably always almost $7,000 fit in for those. So the total I would need is roughly around $25,000 to take care of this.
Any questions on that? Pretty self explanatory. I just want to make sure the Board of Finance knows that they're welcome to ask questions as well. So raise your hand or or unmute and ask the question. Jump in, jump in, feel free.
Do you have another one of those?
Yeah.
No, the ones.
They're the same, it's just the orientation is different. Landscape versus. Okay, Tom, thank you very much. One question, which I will make sure that I ask all the departments that fall under this criteria. Has your commission weighed in on these capital requests?
At this point, no, because we've been a little, you know, all over the place with the commission, we had to cancel some meetings and things like that. But as far as the particulars on the sweeper, yes. The sweeper, the curb machine, the Bobcat, they all know about the drainage, so really, the only, the only other one is this new garage equipment one.
Great, so I would certainly greatly appreciate, I think the balance here would be to make sure the commission is in agreement with you on these things.
Okay, very well, like I said, it's only one that they don't really know about, okay?
Great. Thank you, Tom.
Okay, thank you, you guys have a good day.
Have a great day, good weekend. Next up, Park and Recreation, Rick and? Are you going to come in or you're just providing support from the back bench?
I offered her my chair, so. Here, I'll stay here.
Rose didn't want to be a thorn in the side.
Curry's used wrecking for.
Okay. Rick?
Oh, good morning. So I think, I think I have the same order that you probably have, some machine that Mary Jane gave me, so hopefully it's going to be easy for you to follow along. It just focuses on for 2023, 22, 23. So we've rebuilt netting at Long Hill Park Baseball Backstop, 27,000. The netting shot, I mean, we should really rebuild it right now, we don't have the funds to do it, but it's, it's just, it's all torn from, you know, trees hitting it and just different, you know, snow, wind, whatever over the years. We also had a request to extend the first base side fence beyond first base so that the overthrowing balls don't go into the wetlands, you know, so that was another request to extend that, so that's in that $27,000 figure. Any questions on that?
I remember that park, well, a lot of balls went through those.
Replace the Showmobile. You know, it's a 1994, so it's about 28 years old, or will be 29, 30 by the time we replace it. As you know, it gets tremendous use, we take it out about 20 to 30 times a year, it's out somewhere in town, usually between the green, the beach. It's been at Bishop's, we had to bring it up to Melissa Jones for an event this past fall or summer, I guess, spring, whatever it was, fall, I think. And then, but it's rusting, it leaks or issues with gaskets, we've tried replacing three times, and it just, just doesn't work. So the back wall started to warp on it now. And I'm worried about the hydraulics, you know, it's old. I mean, the price has gone way up, when we got that, it was $51,000, so it's $190,000 now. It's amazing how it's gone up, and those are direct quotes we got.
I just want to add that the Showmobile was an approved purchase through ARPA. If you see on the spreadsheet and even on the site, anything we have listed as other funding source has been approved by through ARPA funds already, but they are capital expenditures, so we have included them on here, but they are not part of the general fund, capital fund. Okay, so when you see other, that's what that is. Okay, thank you.
The low profile trailer, it's replacing one that's 36 years old. You know, it's a 1985 trailer. And we'll get a lot of years out of it, at some point they wear out, that's about 9,000. Passenger bus, we actually have one that is out of service right now, just, it's just not worth bringing it back, it's just, we need so much work, we're just not even using it right now. But that 18,000 is, we've been good about getting grants, Terry Buck has been great about applying for those. Assuming we get the grant, our cost will only be 18,000, and I think three or four years down the road, we have one in for full cost of 85,000. They're not going to keep giving us grants all the time, at some point they're going to say no, right? But we, we've been pretty good about getting it, we're just hoping we get another one. So, you know, as you, again, you know, those buses are used a lot, that particular bus has 116,000 miles on it. When we used to lease them from the Greater New Haven Transit District, which they don't do anymore, we have to buy them now, but when we used to, the useful life was five years or 75,000 miles, whatever came first, and anyway, that's just to turn them in. So, you know, we're way over that with this bus. Boy, right now in Operation Three, we had five. We're using the van more now. You know, with the regular, it's like a Dodge Caravan, you know, I say van, not a bus van, but a car van. Terry came up with a great idea a couple of years ago, because we were having trouble getting drivers with the CDL license. You don't need a CDL to drive a car, you just need a passenger endorsement, and so we have two guys we've hired who are car drivers and transporting people, so not driving the bus. And that's been a big, big help, but you only take one or two people at a time, and it's not handicapped accessible, so we still need the bus with the lift out for people with wheelchairs.
It seems like we've, there have been two situations during our four year tenure where we've had a grant and purchased a 20 passenger bus, is that not the case? Because that, if we only have three, and two of them are old, there's an extra bus.
We actually have five.
We have five.
We have five, that one point we've said.
I still have five down there, right?
Five, but two aren't working right now.
Yeah.
Okay. Is one of those something we've purchased in the past four years?
No, 2009, we have one, it's 2008, 2009.
No, the more recent ones, they're good.
Yeah, 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 oh, I'm sorry, yeah. They're working, they're not, yeah, I think two, three years old.
So they have two working, and then we have two up for replacement.
We have three working, yeah, yeah, one of them was given to us by the Housing Authority eight years ago, maybe. And that's a 15 passenger bus.
So, I'm sorry, to be so thick, this will bring us back up to the five. We'll have five.
Four, yeah, and then we have another one, and I think two years down, two or three years down the road, that gets, that'll get us five. And there's also, as Rick just mentioned, a challenge of getting capable qualified drivers, certain drivers. We actually have a young man at Public Works who's working his way through a CBL, it's a challenging set of testing criteria, so. That is, that's, so, so the question is, I think, do we really have a need for four? Do we have drivers to support four? And particularly now that you're starting to use other types of vehicles. Do we, we definitively need to have a fourth? I would say yes, man, because especially, there are a lot of times Terry schedules trips, two of the buses go on a trip. And we still need a couple in town for the, whatever we do around town, you know, doctor deployments, our medical supplies is increasingly crazy. A lot of what we do is just bringing people to doctor appointment. You know, we have people on dialysis, you know, VA hospital, those kinds of things.
No question, my question was more, do we have the capacity to actually get four on the road?
Just by drivers, we're picking up, hopefully in the next two months, two more. Yeah, we have one that's, we have, I think we just started a PAF on him recently, he's a school bus driver in Madison. He can work three hours a day with us, and in the summer he's available all the time. And we have another person that may be coming on with us in January.
These folks that like the medical business, they're not, they're not, they don't have Greater New Haven Transit District, I mean, where are the option out here?
We're the main option, with that dial right, sometimes you can wait an hour and a half for them to come get you. You know, if you're in a doctor's office, you know, we want to treat our citizens better than that, I'm not criticizing them, it's they're low and they're, you know, travel through a lot of different towns, we're not, we're not a priority necessarily, just whenever they get.
Yeah, it feels like it's on the outer edge of their.
Yeah.
We are not, we are not actually a contributing member to the Greater New Haven Transit District.
Okay, so this is not a redundant service we're providing.
It really is a primary service.
Correct.
Okay. Because we used to, to your point now, we used to give them a portion of a grant or a whole grant, but we're keeping that grant now because we're.
We're providing services on behalf of.
Awesome, yeah, yeah.
Next.
This, the bathroom counters and sinks, last year we put that request in. And you gave us 5,000, we asked for 25, so we have the five, you know, for the for the, I'm sorry, the faucets. But we still, again, they're getting old, they're sort of delaminating, and we just, you know, it just looks nicer if you have something nice. The elevator, this is something new, 150,000, it's a big number. It's upgrading it, the problem with the elevator now, again, it's like 29 years old. It is, if you're, it's old technology, there's new technology now, so if something goes, then the circuit board or whatever, my daughter can be able to get it replaced, because they don't make those kind anymore. But it also includes, we were tied in with the alarm system, which not tied in with the building alarm system right now. And there's no ventilation in it, so that's another thing to say, again, COVID and everything else, you got ventilation in elevators, we don't have that. So that's why that's in there, it's upgrading to, you know, modernize it, I think. Pretty sure Steve said the town hall was done not too long ago, and the same idea, we've got to upgrade the one at the community center, it probably, probably gets the most use of any elevator in town.
With the ARPA funds, have you looked at everything?
That's, if it has to do with air quality, we may have.
Yeah. It's a stretch. It's a little stretch, yeah.
And do we still have all the ARPA funds been theoretically allocated?
No, but Rick and I talk daily about all of his requests, and anything that we've, anything throughout this process from any of the departments that I thought were ARPA related, I spoke to Matt about, and we kind of had a discussion.
Because it sounds like the elevator would qualify, but I guess.
No, it's inside the building, yeah.
The guidance is allegedly shifting to more infrastructure items. Haven't seen it from Treasury yet, but supposedly they're changing it to allow for more infrastructure stuff. If you combine infrastructure plus air quality, I think we may have a legitimate shot at utilizing American Rescue Planes. But on the other hand, as I teased Rick recently, when he made a request for some other ARPA funds, there's an old favorite line of mine, pigs get fat and hogs get slaughtered. And Rick seems to be requesting a substantial portion of the ARPA funds that are going to be available, but that's just teasing.
At least it don't be a pig. No, that's fine.
I do say no to Rick on a regular basis.
Doesn't hurt to ask. But I respect, I respect the answer. Upgrade new lining to Guilford Whitfield Room, so this, you know, when the Johnson trolls came in and did a lot of upgrades, the scotch lights are called, the lights on the walls in the Guilford room, we're not part of that. And they're failing, and Todd said you can't even get new bulbs from them anymore, this is really crazy how they're doing things now. You have to replace fixtures, you can't just buy bulbs and screw a bulb in, you know, all this new technology, you got to replace the whole fixture. And so we can't get bulbs for those upward lights anymore in the fall.
Land obsolescence, it's a wonderful thing.
Yeah.
We might be able to consider our energy efficiency fund for that, so.
Yeah, we are in a stretch where things have changed a lot. Lighting.
Yeah. The divider, the wall that closes between Guilford and Whitfield Room, it's, it's, I don't want to say it's unsafe, I don't like to make that statement, but, oh, thank you, Todd has to make adjustments frequently on it. Just the other day, actually, I was closing it, and I don't know if tweaked is the right word, but it jams against the floor and you can't move it, you got to kind of almost like lift it to move it, it's just kind of off track, I guess is the way to say it. It needs adjustments, and it's, there's a whole panel in the top that's missing, it's just gone. missing, it's just gone, and we can't even replace it. So, and we do close that fairly frequently, if you have a class on one side and breakfast on the other side or whatever, you know, almost every day we're closing it. So it does get used a lot. The Adams Tennis Courts, I think we've talked about them for a couple of years, you know, it's cracking. We spent about seventeen to twenty thousand dollars every few years to fix the cracks, but at some point you just can't keep replacing the cracks. We originally wanted to go with post-tension concrete, which would have been a lot more expensive, but it lasts a lot, a lot longer. But if you remember, we were planning on doing the new pickleball courts there, and we did test this, the, there's a layer of organic matter, and they said the the weight of the concrete quartz would cause that over time to compress, and, and we'd have dips or whatever. So we have to go ahead and asphalt. It is less expensive and, but we don't really have a lot of choice there. It's just, at some point it's going to crack. And it is cracking a lot now.
A hundred eighty thousand seems like a big number.
That includes new fencing, too, yeah.
We just didn't want an Eastside, it was more than that. So, so if we're using ARPA for playgrounds in Shumerville, that seems like an appropriate test, it seems like it's right in that same.
So clearly, parts of it's.
And the pickleball courts were going to go in Adams, but now they've been moved to Bitner?
Yeah.
And they're happening.
Yes.
They've got plenty of play.
Lots of play, yeah. They're very, very popular. People love them. Thank you all for, you know, approving doing that, because they really, really like them. So irrigate and saw lower cocks. We had that in the budget for this year. It was pushed back to next year, but it was sixty seven thousand. We're reducing it to twenty eight thousand. So how?
Bringing you good news.
How are we able to do that?
Um, we, we went back over there with the landscape architect, and we re-looked at it, and it hasn't been used much in the last two years, you know, because of COVID and everything. And he, he recommended that it's actually looking in pretty good shape. The original plan was to strip it all out, strip it all out, regrade it, and saw it. All, all we're doing now really is irrigation. And there's already irrigation going through it to the upper field, so we just have to tap into the A-line. There's a little bit more near. It's also something called phrase mowing, where a company comes in and they kind of mow out all the weeds. And then we'll go in, we'll aerate it. We can do that part ourselves, aerate it, do some more top dressing and seed it. So we were able to reduce that cost. And still have a good field there. And so we would, if this gets approved, we would like to do that, like, end of June, July first, you know, right away.
I know there's a baseball field on the Lower, and is there a soccer field to the outfield side?
Yeah. Yeah. It's used a lot by school, you know, that's, that's another thing. We probably almost have to wait till summer to do it, because the physics classes recess, they're out there. So it'll be a good improvement for, for, you know, all the soccer kids, little league, as well as people, the kids from the school. Rebuild Long Hill Park Baseball Infield, that kind of almost goes along with the netting, you know, the first thing we talked about. But that infield, from the pitcher's mound to home plate, it's a big dip. And water sits there, it's a puddle. It's muddy, and sometimes you can't have a game there because of that. And so we're only talking about, we talked with Paul Schmidt, the Field Committee, as you all know, Paul's an engineer. We don't really need to go to the entire infield, it's just, you make a line from third base across the pitcher, not on the first base, the front half of them. Backside's pretty good, it's actually not bad at all. So it's just regrading that part and putting a little bit of drainage in there, and we can do that for about eighteen thousand. And the last one, Long Hill Park again, is, is slit drains at the football field. We, we have found that these, these sand slit drains work very, very well. We did that on the outfield of the Long Hill Left Field eight years ago, I think, right? Still, still working well. And we did that at the Upper Side Field, we call it, at, at the high school. Same issue, we had water was there was sometimes standing water, or at least it wasn't draining down. Well, sometimes we go to Mowlet and we were leaving, you know, two inch deep ruts, it was just very soft.
Forty thousand sounds like an impressive amount of money for, for that. I mean, you're taking trenches around the entire perimeter of the field, on one side, both sides?
It's right through it. It's right through it. So it's not just sand, but it's also pipes they have to go in to lead, that this little sand drain is going to these pipes that they drain it out.
So, 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 I'm sorry, explain to me the scope of what, what is being proposed?
So, at Long Hill Park, North Field, the north part of the field, like right behind the barn there?
Yeah.
That, that gets very wet, especially on the, this end toward the woods.
That's not big of an area. Are we talking about forty thousand dollars?
Well, it's probably, I'm, I'm going to, just a little bit of a guess, but sixty yards by a hundred twenty or thirty feet by three sixty, roughly, at least three hundred anyway.
Is this pricing consistent with what we've done in the past year?
It is very similar, very similar. A little more to, you know, you know, everything's cost more right now, but yeah.
And this will go out the bit?
Yes.
So that's everything for twenty twenty three. Was there something? There was, I heard there was something in another year you were hoping to move up.
The passenger van. Yes. I just sort of, I, I I'm wondering if it wouldn't be more, would be better to move up the passenger van, only because it's easier to find a driver for it, less gas. You know, for the people who are able to get into a van. I mean, obviously, we still need the handicap accessible. Vans are not quite as handicap accessible.
So.
The one listed as thirty eight thousand in twenty twenty six. On page two of the parking rec.
Yeah.
You know, trips to New Haven might be more economical.
So you're suggesting moving that up in place of the fourth?
No, not in place of anything.
Terry definitely still needs that bus.
We still need the bus, definitely, yeah.
That means you'd have six active vehicles, right?
Yeah, but, but the, the need is growing and growing. I mean, more and more people are, you know, using us to go to doctors, to go to physical therapy, go shopping.
So one thing that would help with that, Rose, is the Honda that we recently bought for recreation staff to use. We're working on getting, right now it's a GU plate, it's a GU plate, you can't transport people in it. So we're getting it registered, so that, that's something Terry, yeah, Terry Buck became, but decided, we talked to recreation staff about it, too, is that we're going to make that so that can also be a passenger vehicle. So we will have two vans that we can use almost immediately, soon as we get that registered. The only time it's a little tough is in the summer, because recreation staff are using it every day, you know, all over camps and beaches and everything. But for most of the year, we, we can work it out, so it won't be a conflict. They're not that often going out of the office. And we have, you know, the truck that I drive, which is available to them too, so if they need to go somewhere, they could take that. So that's just for immediate, we can do that. I know Rose knew that when we were just talking about this, but we just, just started talking about this last, I think, two weeks ago. Get that registered, so we can use that also.
What about the step to change in the process where we look at, sometimes talk about the parking program? That's not now. There's nothing here that qualifies.
Well, one of the challenges is the program funds, nowhere here, one of the.
I know, it's the last.
COVID has rendered it.
So, I just, I just couldn't remember when that would come into play. Maybe it would come into play.
Not usually at today's meeting, unless, unless it's a specific thing that you're saying, yes, I think the program fund.
Perhaps at the time when we vote on all this in the spring, we could have kind of an update for that status.
And let's not forget, a couple of years ago, we authorized the use of some of the program funds for increased salaries in the front office over there. Which we didn't do last year, because the program funds did not materialize the way we had. Have they started to come back at all, or?
Some, some, yeah, camped, camped it very well in the summer. It was a good program, you know, during COVID here, or the year before. We couldn't have more than forty kids for state statute, statute of state rules or whatever, but we're pretty much back to normal with a hundred, a hundred twenty kids. So that was a lot, but other, you know, other programs, still, some of the exercise programs still aren't getting twenty five people, they might have twelve, you know.
If we have those numbers available, some projections on what that fund's going to look like this year, two, that'll be helpful in our deliberations.
That Jake, that, I thought that was more pressing. That's, that's not on there.
You said, well, because that's, now we're doing that.
Oh, we're doing that.
Not in next year's.
Oh, we're doing that now, okay.
And so I, I know, we just got a proposal from an engineer yesterday, day before, for, you know, for engineering services for it. And I talked to Sonia yesterday, she was in a clinic, where else? She's always in a clinic somewhere. To discuss, we have to, she and I have to sign it, and then bring, you know, like, the recognition to you both to approve it. It's four thousand, so not a board of selectmen approval, but it's, you know, a requisition through, in the normal process. But yeah, the plan is to do that and have it done before we open. There's some.
All right, great, thank you.
All right, any other questions on this? Anyone from the Board of Finance have any questions?
Good morning. How are we doing with the splash pad?
Not well. We pulled, just Bob, we pulled it off of the Board of Selectmen's, we tabled it on the Board of Selectmen's agenda owing to the fact that some, some numbers came back that grossly exceeded the original projections. And when I say grossly exceeded, I think the number went from one eighty to three eighty, almost. So Rick and team are back working with the design folks and, and the, the companies that are provided or that we are working with in terms of providing the, the project to, to see what's, what happened. So it's it is, it's back, it's on back burner at this point, although I think the, it's on back burner, because no one had anticipated four hundred thousand dollars for splash pad. And it was sold to this community at a hundred and eighty to two hundred, perhaps. This is a completely different issue when you're talking, you know, now, we also have, what, sixty thousand dollars in private donations today.
It's quite that much, but, you know, that's, that's what was represented recently.
Veronica said that the other meeting.
Okay.
Yeah, we were, when, when we discussed it at Port of Finance, we were sort of under the impression that they were shovel ready.
That is correct, we are shovel ready.
So.
We're, we're not shovel ready at three hundred eighty thousand dollars.
That's correct.
I guess not.
And a lot, what we're trying to determine is, is that because of the supply issues and the price increases? Because that was not what we, that was not the cost that we received before COVID hit us. So about eighteen to twenty months ago, we had a number of a hundred and seventy six thousand. So this was a surprise to us, too.
Okay, thanks. Anything else?
Good for me.
And Rose, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Have a great rest of this morning.
Morning, Rob.
Morning.
Thank you for your patience this morning.
Of course. So, this year is, is fairly simple. I'm really just adding to a program that we've been doing since the beginning of the Capital Improvements Program, which is to add ten thousand dollars to the computer replacement slash technology replacement schedule. And I've, I've made this point, you know, at this meeting pretty much every year. I just want to quickly qualify that when you see, you know, maybe you see in the paper or something, the library's got a three D printer, or we're loaning out a virtual reality set or something like that, this, this money does not include anything like that at all. This is just the kind of guts of the library. These are the computers that run the circulation desk and the public computers, they get used every day upstairs. And then infrastructure things like the wireless and networking's, you know, technology and that sort of thing. So it's been very successful. The public is always assured of a, of a new computer with new software that's functioning well when they come in for whatever purposes they need. And the only slight shift to this going into the future, I, I think it's just kind of affected everyone during COVID, is a laptop, like, we used to have a laptop cart, kind of, we called it a mobile computer lab. That used to kind of be considered a luxury that the friends funded. Now I think that's really core infrastructure on having mobile technology, so that will be included in this as well. But that's about it in terms of an additional ask for this year.
Wonderful. Rob, thanks for the modesty in terms of your ask. I appreciate that.
Well, the, the big item was the roof, which is happening this year, so that's, that's good.
Well, we've got a lot of things we need to protect from getting wet. The roof is essential, so, but thank you. Any other questions on this? Rob, have a great day and a nice weekend.
Thank you.
Okay, you know, normally with a, through a health break, if anyone needs one at this point, no, good, move right through it.
Quite credit for that, Sandy.
No, it's actually.
No, you got it, you got that one assist.
Right. Okay. Fire Communications Assistant Chief or Deputy, whatever your title is.
Mike Show. Thank you.
Keep cooking bottle washer?
Chief's with us, he's up there.
Is he there?
Oh, I see him, I see him. Oh, okay. So go through our next year's for our capital. We have thermal imaging cameras, and we spread that out over three years for replacement of existing thermal imaging cameras that are end of service life. We'll start replacing them by the oldest our SCBA grant, which we did receive a federal grant for. That's, that was a placeholder, and we received about four hundred fifty thousand dollars, ninety percent of that. And we're in progress, we're about we're one year into our performance period, and we have a year extension, so we're still in the evaluation process of our SCBA. So we, we've been demoing a bunch of different vendors, SCBAs, and testing them out during, you know, live burns and training events. So we haven't, we haven't moved to the purchasing point or decision-making point yet. One of the challenges with that has been the pandemic, obviously. Some of the certification process takes about a year to certify an air pack, so each vendor can only do one at a time based on the way they certify the air packs. And last year, put them behind. So we're kind of waiting for the next, I call them round two of some of these vendors to put forward that information. And once that's, once that's done, we'll be in the, we'll move forward to purchasing or making a plan to move forward with that.
So my, my question was related to the grant. So of this five hundred thousand dollar, should we be allocating some of it to grants, or is five hundred thousand dollar the town's portion?
No, so the five hundred was essentially almost the total cost of the project. We received the federal grant at four hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And based on the number of SCBAs, our obligation is ten percent, so about forty five, I'd say, and based on the increased costs, it might be a little bit more, but it'll be much smaller than that.
So is it fair for me to move four fifty into grant funding and to leave the five, the fifty thousand in the general fund? Because we, right now it's all general fund.
Right.
Nothing applicable to the grant, so I'm just trying. So if we were to approve this, how much money does a town have to pay?
Well, ten percent of whatever the cost that.
So I can leave the fifty, so I can leave the fifty for the town's portion and put four fifty in a grant portion?
Yeah, essentially, yeah. And what the grant is just, you know, again, it's going to be federally funded.
I, I understand, but yeah.
So. Okay. The defibrillators, EKG monitors, that started last year, so we, again, a replacement of existing our EKG monitors that we communicate with the hospital with, and that was a five-year payment plan, so we purchased and were able to get the monitors, and over the five years is the thirty one, two sixty nine. Wait, per year? Per year, yeah. So the total cost of the project would have been the five times thirty one, two sixty nine. So, and that was for, I believe it was six monitors, EKG monitors for the ambulances.
Like, something about my, someone into town about compatibility issue with the defibrillators and the communication between the ambulances and the, you know, the, the hospitals. Is there, is there an issue there?
So, no, so we have, so we didn't know, but the way we're set up with these newer monitors is we directly, we have modems and everything in there, and we directly communicate. So the doctor of the emergency room can actually see the heartbeat and everything from, you know, if we're twenty minutes out of the hospital, in the event that something changes, or we need to push a different medication or paramedics. The hospital has the ability to watch this. Also, we have the ability to transmit our stuff. We share data as part of that hospital data exchange. So we have to remain compatible with their system, so that's all part of a long-term chart for patient care churn. That was part of that, you know, the, the upgrade of technology equipment over time for all the hospitals as well.
Got it.
The hazardous materials equipment, sixteen thousand, five seventeen. So that's, again, it's like, I call it every year, every ten years are there certain equipment within the hazmat realm that replaces. So like, next year, for instance, they're called MT ninety four B-level suits, they are ten years. uh, they're called MT ninety four, um, B level suits. They are ten years end of service life. So at ten years, we have to replace the equipment. So we're, um, piecing together over that time period based on, um, expiring equipment and hazmat equipment. Um, same thing for technical rescue, um, like our rope equipment, our ropes, same thing, ten year shelf life, uh, that it expires after ten years. So we have to replace our stuff. Um.
And what happens is it, it needs to be destroyed at your zone. That's, that's, there's no use to have the market.
No, so like our hazmat training suits, for instance, like let's say we're going to take those suits out of service. We can use them for training, but we can't use them in a real hazmat environment.
Okay.
So instead of buying training suits, we just downgrade our, our suits and we use them in training, same way with like, uh, chips and tubes. We use some tubes for testing for chemicals and stuff.
Okay.
We can't actually use them. Um, it's just like an expiration date on anything. You can't use it in the real event, same thing, but you can use it for training. So.
There's some secondary use.
So the only, the secondary use a lot for downgrading rope is not for life safety. I mean, you know, we can't hang any, anybody over the side of a cliff or anything with it. But what we can do is we use it for, uh, ropes and knot tying. We'll cut apart the ropes and, um, you know, basic knot tying and stuff for, uh, training. So a lot of times it gets downgraded to a secondary use. Great. Um, our training, our training facility is in progress. Again, thank you at last Board of Selectmen meeting for approval. We've, uh, moved forward with the purchase order and we're in the implementation, uh, next stages of that. The, uh, public safety storage building, now that we're, we're going to begin the next phases of approval, starting, you know, from all the approval levels through boards and commissions over the next couple of months is a plan for that. Vehicles, uh, so the, the next one down for this year is the staff vehicle. So the replacement of the Ford Explorer nineteen nine, uh, nineteen ninety eight, that actually just went to, uh, Public Works for, uh, to go out to auction in the bus. So just made it down to Tom this past week. I guess there's a large group of, uh.
There's about a half a dozen vehicles.
Yes. We took advantage of that again. So continuing just cycling down vehicles and, um, getting them off the, the books.
Like, um, gonna ask this of everybody that's gonna look for a vehicle, um, hybrid, uh, you know, EV electric or anything, any opportunity to, to move in that direction.
So there, I'd say over time, yes, um, the very challenging piece, you know, as Butch talked about, uh, with the police vehicles. Getting vehicles right now is, uh, very challenging and ordering ahead of time placeholders. Um, electric vehicle, I'd say we're, you know, we always continually look to, um, look at offers for hybrid and move to hybrid. Um, it's very in the, in, in trying to get vehicles right now is, is a hot commodity, but moving forward in the future, I know any way we can look to target, um, to introduce hybrid and, and test run it and see how it does. But I believe the PD has at least one or two vehicles. So, uh, looking at that data and trying to target the same things and, uh, look for to improve efficiency.
As, as I had mentioned to Butch, if, uh, this survives the, uh, the budget and the budget gets approved in April, uh, that's the time I think we got to start placing orders. Cause, uh, you know, the funds aren't going to be available till July one anyway. So, well, you know, we, we should get, start on the lead.
Right.
So.
And that lead time, hopefully it, over the next couple of years, it'll continue to shrink, but it's, it's pushed out with everything in the commodities lines.
Today.
And it's not just vehicles. Everything is.
Um, so is there, um, uh, currently, um, uh, at the public safety facility, is there any ability to charge electric vehicles yet?
Hmm, I don't believe so. I believe just town hall. Um, I don't.
So, uh, yeah, I'm actually plugged in right now.
Yep.
But, but at some point, I mean, municipal vehicles always strike me as like quite literally the perfect application for electric, all electric vehicles. They stay in a defined location. You're not ever very far from your location where you need to recharge. And, and, you know, so range is not an issue. The recharging is not an issue. At some point, ten years from now, we're not going to be having this conversation. It's going to be over. And so I'd be interested to see what sort of the plan is and including, including emergency vehicles.
Now, I know that fire trucks, there, there is a push even with fire apparatus and stuff like that. And a lot of stuff is still in, in, I call it research and development, but they're putting stuff out there, frontline stuff. But we've been, you know, it's, it, we've been paying attention to it and watching it. It's just trying to, you know, you know, somebody else is testing it and getting the data of how well it's working, cost of, uh, you know, even maintenance and mechanic work.
But, but maintenance is the interesting one because they're obviously less complicated. Um, this, you know, there's no engine maintenance. You have motors that you replace in and out. I mean, I'm not saying that that's not potentially significant. Um, but there's pluses and minuses. The fact is, right now, the, the brand new vehicle in that would be more expensive. I'm not saying it's ready right now, but to start thinking about when we're going to be putting the infrastructure in, to me makes a lot of sense.
Yep, even, yeah, that makes sense too. Not just for municipal, but any charging stations for vehicles within the complex of town.
Sure. Uh, just, uh, as a sideline, our sustainable government tax force, uh, at my request is working with the Council of Governments Initiative, uh, and statewide initiative on EV readiness. Uh, there are some targets that the state is, uh, supposed to get to by twenty thirty, uh, certain percentage of fleets being either hybrid or, or electric. And one of, one of the challenges, uh, we're looking for grant funds, uh, is the, uh, is the charging set. It would be theoretically, we would need to put, you know, a charging station at each of our town facilities where we have those vehicles. So we want up at, uh, public safety, we probably want a public works, one, uh, or the community center, uh, et cetera, to effectively allow for the, the use of those, uh, those types of vehicles. And then, and that has been identified as one of the sticking points.
Sure.
On adoption of technology. And in case anybody's worried about whether they're more powerful or not, there are, they, they just need to actually experience those, the operation of those things. There's school buses, there's dump trucks, there's trash trucks, there's everything out there. And having this, you know, so you, both problems need to be solved together over time. It doesn't make any sense to start buying those vehicles.
Yeah, not a big charge.
So we have the charge of stage. Anyway, and that's, and there will be grant funding available for the infrastructure.
Right.
And that's the, the, the first start of track. So the back point, to, to the said, the interim position of hybrids, I think that's a great idea to, when it's available. I understand this year is a purchasing disaster.
In general.
But, um, as long as, as long as somebody's got an eye on that and a sort of a mental timeline of when we start seeing that, I think that's the way we should be going.
Okay.
Right. All right, next one.
The, the other two are, I believe, I think on this sheet are, they're under, um, civil preparedness, I believe. Uh, do those get switched to communications or is it fire?
Still fire.
Okay, so one of them.
Do you want to change?
Uh, I don't think it matters. I think, uh, so the one big piece is the emergency generator at thirty two Church Street. Um, I believe, I think Charlie's, uh, talked to you in general. It's, it's the existing one does not meet the full capacity of the emergency shelter. So, uh, and I, it's, the goal is to, uh, replace it with one that's a hundred percent, uh, air conditioning, heat, everything is a hundred percent at the facility.
Got it.
And then, um, the last one, the civil preparedness for the twenty three, two thirty one for a sandbag machine, um, more and more recently.
Circle back to that one for a second?
Oh, sure.
Is it, is it, is there? Or is it just more expensive? Is there any possible way of having, so the, the equipment we have is, is not.
Size for the.
It's size, not, it's not a function of, it's no longer, it's aging out, it's can't get parts. It's not a function of not operating properly, right?
And, um, Charlie might be a better answer with that, with the age of the actual generator.
But I'd be interested, that's like, but the, the second part really tied into the same question is if the issue is, we need to be able to make sure HVAC is included. Cause there's some way of having a supplemental system or that, you know, that would be less than two hundred thousand dollars. Or does that present complications that I'm just not spotting on the back of the napkin here?
I, I believe, uh, it's more cost efficient to replace the generator itself as opposed to modifying the systems that are existing infrastructure that's already in there. Um, you know, meaning in the summertime, a lot of times, uh, Rick runs the cooling shelters or they'll have charging stations for cooling and stuff. And vice versa for heating in the winter, uh, when cold times. And I believe, uh, I, I'm not a hundred percent, but Charlie'd be able to better answer this is it's, it's not, it doesn't have the capacity to run the full extent of what needs to be run.
Charlie, you want any comments on that?
Yeah, um, that current generator has always been insufficient to run that building. The biggest issue that we have is that it only runs maybe a half the building, doesn't run anything really up on the second floor. It doesn't run the elevator. So it really, uh, limits the capacity and use of the building during the shelter thing. But the main part of this thing is the lack of ventilation. Um, you know, with COVID and everything that's going on, it's important to have ventilation. It's important to have air conditioning. And, uh, there'd be too many complications to have a, a two, two, uh, two emergency generators in the same facility. It's just, first of all, it's not code and I wouldn't recommend it.
Charlie, would we be able to redeploy the existing, uh, generator for any purposes?
Um, uh, fifty Boston Street, maybe they have no generator. That generator is down there currently should be more than big enough to run that. Uh, uh, you know, any other facility that has, you know, a minimal lull, um, yes.
Okay.
My, definitely not big enough for the library.
Great.
What about the issue of using the high school for more of the emergency shelter?
Uh, that's a question for the preparedness folks, um.
It, it, it's far more lengthy to discuss it, you know, on a later date, Charlie, if you want to discuss that.
Okay.
Okay.
All right. Make the comment I made earlier that, uh, this may well fall under infrastructure funds. If.
We're in a unique time.
Yeah, we are in a unique time and, and the infrastructure funds, uh, because, uh, Congress can't seem to get out of their own way, but, uh, there was some news last night that the House of Representatives is ready to pass, uh, the, the President's infrastructure bill. Um, and I, I, I think these are the kind of projects we need to have at the ready. Uh, in the event that, uh, that bill does get passed, as I'm assuming similar to the American Rescue Plan funds, that there will be money made available to, you know, all communities throughout the, the, throughout, so I think there's an opportunity for us to capitalize and, and be ready to go. Some of that may shake out in the next couple of months. All right, anything else, Mike, or is that?
What the last project was the sandbags. And the only reason I bring it up is just because like the other, the details that go with it is because, um, more and more recently, people are coming for sandbags and we're helping, you know, this last storm. I don't remember the number of sandbags we loaded, but our crews are out there helping. So any way we can offset, uh, the, the ability to produce sandbags, um, in low lying areas, people are uh, using them a lot more. So that's what that is.
Great. Any, any, uh? So I, maybe I didn't sort of fully appreciate that. So, so people, it's a service the town provides.
Yes.
People can come to emergency service and say, listen, storm's coming. I've got a flood risk. I need two dozen sandbags.
Yep.
All, all the birds brings, uh, dump trucks full of sand. Uh, they've got the bags over there.
Yep.
Uh, and literally there were so many of our residents who are physically unable to pack their own bags.
I, I believe the last storm, I believe the last storm, we gave out approximately ten thousand bags.
Same, yeah. A lot.
Two dump trucks.
Uh, yeah, okay.
And we had senior citizens that were, uh, you know, cause the crews are obviously busy, uh, going to calls, handling calls, and they were out there shoveling, um, their own sandbags and trying to lift them up. This machine's going to make it a lot easier for the public to do it.
Fascinating. Something you didn't know about.
That's amazing.
Actually, that, actually it was one of my neighbors alerted, uh, me to that, the capacity, uh, that, or that service that we provided. I think it was the first year I was in, we were in this thing. Those, are you guys still doing that, uh, sandbag program? I said, what's sand?
The, the demand's increased and there's a lot of low lying coastal area.
Well, sea level rise is going to create even more demand.
Yeah.
And, and, and it's another lot of circumstances. It's, I, I get it. It's an upfront expense, but if you, if you preserve half a dozen houses in some way, it prevents some catastrophic flooding for somebody. There's a lot of money potentially to be saved from that. So it's, uh, a wonderful thing. I mean, you guys do a lot that people don't see all the time. So thank you again. Uh, Board of Finance, any questions on any of these? Hearing none?
You have communications.
We have, uh, is this gonna say?
Okay. We weren't letting them go yet.
Hang on.
Where's communications?
We need to bring fifty thousand next year, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, so we're at fifty thousand for communications. And, uh, that's maintenance and sustainment of existing infrastructure, uh, in our radio system. So, uh, radio system infrastructure. Email. I believe we have, uh, we're upgrading a fiber, fiber line and, uh, you know, and, um, say some base station upgrades. So just general maintenance of existing, uh, replacing existing equipment in, uh, the public safety radio system. We also, uh, say, uh, another, uh, upcoming opportunity was the, uh, we've, uh, partnered, wouldn't say partnered with the state, but our, our improvements to existing radio structure with new, uh, we're on their tower site to ability to receive our audio with them. So, you know, the state put up a tower and basically we have an MOU with the state, a real estate on there to have our equipment on their tower. So it's another, any opportunity we can to take advantage of somebody else paying for a tower.
Well, we're all paying for it. Dollars.
Indirect.
Indirect, you're right. Good. Any questions? All right. Mike, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Have a great day. Charlie, thank you.
Have a good day.
A good day, everybody.
You too. All right, let's move on to police. Uh, we've got, uh, uh, chief and deputy. We've got both of you today. Uh, Butch and Chris, uh, thanks for your patience and waiting for this to happen. Um, who's, uh, who's taking the lead? Uh, turn it over to the two of you.
I'll, I'll, I'll take the lead. So good morning, everybody. I'll kind of go down, uh, down the list that, uh, Mary Jane provided, try and go in the order that, uh, our requests show up on the list. So the, the first is a roof. Uh, this has been on our, uh, five-year, uh, capital for a while. The building's twenty five years old. Um, we have some challenges when, uh, when we have significant snow and ice, uh, with some areas valley issues with leaks. The fire department, Parks and Rec and Public Works have helped us, uh, in those snowstorms as well as, uh, all of us here with roof rakes, clearing some of those areas when those storms occur to keep, uh, leaks and things like that from happening. Uh, it's just, uh, it's time to get the roof, uh, replaced. So we've been in, uh, contact with Steve Nyedorf. Uh, he's also recommended that we, uh, perhaps, uh, do, uh, an, an engineering study, uh, and, uh, there may be new, uh, materials and technology out there that, uh, they may be able to put on this roof to help us, uh, relieve some of those issues in the valleys and along the, uh, the eaves to help, uh, you know, melt snow and things like that. So that hundred and fifty thousand there is, is a placeholder, uh, until we can get some of that information, uh, back and, uh, to get, uh, fixed, uh, fixed cost for what that roof is gonna, gonna, uh, need for a cost to replace.
Is that placeholder? Does that include the cost for the engineering study or just the roof?
Uh, we put that in originally just for the roof, but now with the engineering study, I don't know what that number's going to be. Again, we've been in conversations with Steve and, uh, we're going to have to get that, uh, done. We hadn't anticipated that upfront, but it was a recommendation from him.
So a quick question procedurally, uh, was this on the five-year capital plan, uh, previously? It's typically a roof with a life expectancy of twenty to twenty-five years would be the bond of capital project. And, uh, this is a year, they don't go out, uh, for bonding, right? The town only does it every couple of years.
But we typically only bonded if we can't afford it in capital.
Got you.
But so, um, was it on last year? I don't have last year's in front of me.
It's been on for a number of years. We've had it in the five-year capital for a number of years and it now it's coming up to, uh, to the time where it's, uh, it's at the front of the line.
Shame on us for not having picked that up and moved that into last year's bonding, but it has to be done, has to be done. All right, uh, next, unless anybody has any more questions on the roof.
Uh, the next one would be, uh, the network cameras, uh, and that, those are a number of, uh, Maraki Network, uh, I'm, I'm sorry, uh, switches, Maraki Network switches. As you know, we have the, uh, the public safety, uh, IT coordinator that works between the police and fire and, uh, he keeps all of our systems, uh, up to speed here. And those are switches that are end of life and need either replacement or upgrading, uh, and that's what that, uh, that cost would be. And that, those, uh, those, uh, switches are for, uh, our cameras, camera systems and other computer systems here, uh, in the, in the building. Um, and that, uh, that quote is, uh, again, that's a, that's a, that's a quote for those switches at this time.
Okay, any questions on that? No? All right, next one.
Uh, body armor, uh, this, this shows up every year. Uh, we have, we're on a five-year rotation. Uh, that's the required rotation for body armor, uh, for the officers. Uh, so we replace, uh, a number of, uh, body armor each year. Uh, that number can vary depending on when we hire or when somebody leaves and, and somebody else replaces them. So each year it may move one or two, uh, in one direction or the other, but, uh, that, that, uh, request is on every year. Uh, this year and, uh, and, and again, in next year, we, uh, we added some body armor there for our SWAT personnel. Uh, those, uh, the body armor for them in, in, uh, addition to their day-to-day body armor is a much higher level body armor. Uh, we have, uh, you know, we belong to the regional SWAT team. So we provide members here to that team as a regional asset. And, uh, so we, we equip our own officers. Each agency equips their own officers with that. And uh, so we, we equip our own officers, each agency equips their own officers with that equipment. Uh, right now, we have, uh, we have a couple of people who have come off the uh, the SWAT team, they've been on for a long time, we, uh, two people came off. We have a third that potentially may be rotating off, so we would be looking to add three more people to that SWAT team for those replacements. And that's uh, we added those uh, kits into that body armor for this year's request above and beyond uh, what we would request for just the uh, personal body armor. So that's what that number uh, represents.
Lou has a question on that.
Yeah, uh, Chief, thanks, what, what, where, where, where is this five-year replacement recommendations, from the manufacturer, is there, is there a, a governing body that oversees this, and what is it that, that essentially requires that? Does the, does the, does the actual armor break down, does the, does the fabric within which it's being held begin to break down, like, why do they need to be replaced?
That is uh, that, that's the, the industry standard and the manufacturer recommendation is five years, I mean, that's across the board, and part of the problem is uh, it, and again, at six years, it, it may still be as good as it what it, it was in year one. The problem is with, you know, they, uh, we wear that as, as a mandatory wear, so people are wearing it whenever they're working, so you have body sweat, it's, it's uh, you know, any, any uh, uh, environmental impact on, on the uh, on the materials, so with all those things happening, uh, the manufacturers, uh, you know, that can break down the uh, uh, the ability of that, that material to stop uh, a, a, a fired projectile um, because of the chemicals from sweat, environmental, things like that that impacted over those five years.
Okay, very helpful, thank you. It was, you know, somebody's wearing it five days.
The high, it's a high wear.
And it's not something you can wash or clean, uh, you know, it's, it's, it's not like your uniform shirt, you know, it's, you wear it, it's in a carrier, you can wash the carrier, but you can't, you can't do any real maintenance on the, on the armor itself.
All right, thank you. Uh, next up?
The, the, the Taser, that's uh, again, that's a, our Tasers, uh, we just went through a five-year, we replaced them five years ago, we're in the fifth year right now. Um, for the uh, the, the Tasers, we had that uh, I don't know if you recall, but we uh, we spread that out over five years to, to replace all of our Tasers, our Taser were about twelve years old. We replaced them about five years ago. Uh, those, that number represents uh, any replacement cartridges, uh, both training and operational cartridges, and uh, between five to eight uh, Tasers per year, uh, we're estimating that we may have to replace uh, going forward uh, as those things, uh, as they get older, uh, they tend, because they are electronic, uh, tend to have uh, issues, and that number represents uh, five to eight replacements plus all of the other equipment uh, that we need uh, to operate those Tasers uh, over that period of time.
Uh, this is not, not, not a new item for us.
Yep.
Chief, should that be carried into twenty-six and twenty-seven too, or, or no?
Uh, well, I'm, I'm, we only carried it out a couple of years, uh, because we may be looking, again, technology the way it is. We get to a point where a, a lot of these uh, companies like Taser or the Body Camera uh, people, uh, all of a sudden, they stop supporting the systems that we have, and we only pushed it out to the, to the three years thinking we may have to replace those completely uh, in those later years, and don't know, I don't have a good uh, cost estimate on what that would be.
Okay, anything further on Tasers? No? Uh. Uh, vehicles, I think is next.
Yeah, so uh, vehicles, and I know I, I heard you talking to Mike a little bit about it, and just uh, just to circle back on some of the things we talked about when uh, we brought the uh, request up to uh, to the board uh, last week for, for this year's uh, vehicles. Uh, we have reached out to our uh, vendor, and he is willing to work with us to do some placeholder stuff for hybrid moving forward uh, to hopefully be able to get our hands on it if they're available. Uh, you know, I, I know Mike, uh, Mike mentioned it, and I, and I had mentioned it. Uh, it's a real challenge trying to get some of this equipment, including the vehicles. Um, so we, we, we are working with him, we've already reached out to him, and hopefully we'll be able to get some placeholder stuff, because we would like to uh, start transitioning to that, at least that hybrid uh, uh, type vehicle uh, moving forward. That being said, actually, we did have one of our, uh, we always uh, reach out when we're doing the budget for recommendations, and actually, one of our sergeants did recommend uh, going with the uh, the Tesla uh, total electric, it's only about uh, twelve or fourteen thousand dollars more than what we normally spend, but uh, he thought we might be able to make that back in uh, in savings on gas, so certainly something to look at down the road, I know uh, oh, uh, one of the board members brought that up about full electric and uh, I don't know if Tesla's the way to go, but uh, certainly uh, thinking that way might be good, so anyway, with these vehicles, again, we're uh, you know, uh, this is something that shows up on our, on our five-year budget uh, every year, uh, as you know, because those are the offices for the officers. Uh, and uh, you know, we either ask for two or three vehicles depending on uh, you know, what vehicles were bought five years prior. Uh, in this case, again, it looks uh, you know, that uh, we have three vehicles that are, are gonna be at or beyond a hundred thousand miles. I've also talked before, I know, I don't want to sound like a broken record, but uh, the, the runtime on those vehicles uh, above and beyond the mileage is one of the things that uh, is critical when we uh, look to replace them. Uh, we also have an unmarked uh, in there, our th- our three unmarked vehicles are the vehicles for the detective unit. Uh, those are, those are uh, vehicles, they're similar uh, to our marked vehicles, they're explorers, but um, they have no markings on them, uh, those vehicles in the detective unit now are between uh, about, they will be between ten and twelve years old each, the three vehicles that are there, so they again are getting uh, getting toward the end of their useful life. Uh, as with all of our vehicles, uh, you know, when they are at the end of their useful life, uh, we do uh, try to circle those back into the town, the different departments uh, working with Public Works uh, based on whether or not the vehicle is uh, is, is, is worth saving and moving to another department, so if they do get a life uh, many times uh, in the town after we're done with them.
And uh, and the vehicles, also the vehicle components, obviously, we've talked about that, that's, that's the, that's the uplift on uh, uh, all the, all the equipment that goes into the vehicles.
That's right, that's everything from, uh, uh, like you said, there, uh, when we talked about it last week, there are some things that we can switch over. There are some things that get to end of life that we have to replace. Um, it's uh, mobile video cameras, uh, radios, normally we can switch those over, uh, radar units, we can switch over unless they're at end of life, then we buy new ones. Uh, our weapons uh, vault for the, for our rifles and shotguns goes in those cars. Uh, there's a number of uh, you know, lighting systems and siren, siren uh, systems that go in uh, as well as a cage system that go into those cars. Anything that we can switch from car to car, we do. Uh, Ford isn't very helpful, sometimes they change the uh, with different model years, they change uh, uh, how those uh, vehicles are uh, put together, and sometimes things don't fit and we have to buy new. Uh, but whenever we can switch from one to the other, we do.
Yes, it's too bad, that for years with that Crown Vic, you knew what you were getting, and that, and that didn't change year over year over year, yeah.
Right, right, and they were doing that with the explorers for a while, but then uh, recently, model years, you usually get one or two years out of them, and then they switch it up, and we've got to, we've got to scramble to try and make things fit.
Got it.
And, and the last one would be the unmarked, which I talked about briefly already, that uh, that is that vehicle uh, we're looking to, to, to change for uh, those detective, uh, one of those detective vehicles.
Got it. Okay, anything further?
I just had a question for Chris, Chris, are you involved with the um, kittens?
Uh, I was involved so much as I took a photo with them.
I saw that, yes. Just wondered how they're doing.
Oh, great. And we got a lot of interest in them.
Well, I bet you did.
Uh, okay, anything further? Board of finance members, if uh, any questions or comments? Thank you very much, Butch and uh, Chris, appreciate it.
All right, thanks, and the board and the finance too, thank you.
You got it.
Have a good day.
Have a, have a good day. All right, uh, golf course is next, uh, Ted, who's got that question?
That question, we give it, just pass it.
Did, did the uh? Oh, yeah, that's gonna be happening, yeah, yeah.
All right, never mind.
Never mind.
We're gonna ask that of everybody, just go. Okay, Ted? Ted, I think you're muted still? There you go.
Good morning.
Good morning.
How are you?
Good, how about you?
Everyone's good. First of all, I'd like to say thanks to the Board of uh, Selectmen for my new blower, uh, it's worked out great. Um, it has a lot of power, and everybody knows all the leaves just fell down, so. Um, working up on a lot of cleanup, it's very helpful. Um, basically, the, the pieces of equipment I have in there are replacing um, Green's mowers, uh, rough mowers and fairway mowers, which are ba- basically twenty to twenty-four years old. Um, I think uh, the first one is the Green's mower, that's, it's coming up next in the capital request. Um, that's basically what I, what I have for you. Um, if there's any questions, I can answer them.
Just one, Ted, have you uh, run your uh, uh, your capital budget through the commission yet uh, for their uh, their uh, agreement and blessing?
Yeah, I mean, we had a meeting on Tuesday, just basically told them I was updating uh, some equipment that's over twenty years old.
Okay. Uh, if you wouldn't mind that the next meeting just specifically indicate, um, you know, which pieces you're looking to do and get their uh, confirmation or that uh, on the appropriate.
Yep.
And again, they said, you know, twenty, uh, one of the bowers almost thirty years old, right?
Yep.
The, the, the first item listed, the Green's mast, there are two twelve thousand dollar items, there are two, those are two, those are two different things. One's a Green's master and one's a Green's mower and.
Yep.
But those are.
Okay, those are basically, those are basically walk-behind Green's mowers. You know what I mean, so the ones we have are basically, you know, twenty-two years and twenty-four years old, so we're basically just updating those. I mean, they work, and uh, but I'm just, you know, the wear and tear of them are, are just starting to go down.
And, and you just need two because you need to get a, the two operating at the same time in order to get done in a time, I mean, or do they do two different functions? Yeah, they do two different functions, what's, why two of them?
Um, well, in case one breaks down, there's uh, five multiple belts on those things, and sometimes the belts break, and sometimes you, you lose, you lose downtime for a, a couple of days. So it's always good to have a spare uh, laying around.
There's possible. Okay, any further questions? Yeah, I'm, I'm, if the risk of taking a, a shot from somebody else, so I'm, I'm gonna just ask, are there electric options for this equipment?
Yes, there are. Um, but the, the pricing, the price, the price increase is about about five thousand dollars, so we could go electric on the Green's mowers. All those mowers are all electric, but the prices go up substantially.
And, and, and how much fuel do you use? What is your fuel bill for the year?
Um, I think we're raising around three, three thousand dollars for the whole year.
So if you cut that in half, you'd have to go fifty-nine dollars, you'd have to go six, seven, eight years before you came close to a break even.
Yeah.
Correct.
And that doesn't include the cost to charge the battery components?
Right.
Electricity.
Right, and, and I don't, I don't know a lot about the battery components, like, you know, I mean, if we spend five thousand dollars for a new electric motor, I mean, is it good for ten years, or is it good for, you know, twenty years? I'm not exactly sure, uh, but I will talk to some of my uh, my reps and find out, you know, what's, what's the lifespan of these batteries for these mowers.
But, but we appreciate that, uh, you, you, take us, just take a look and see, give us some cost differentials and what the, what the industry is saying, I'm sure, I'm sure your Superintendent's Association uh, probably has some uh, data that you could, uh, they could share.
Yeah, and it's less, it's less. Basically.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, and some of the residential communities where they have issues with, you know, noise, that's a lot, that's, that's one of the main things why they go electric. You know, some of them are in some high, you know, some high-end, you know, uh, condo units or something like that, and they just don't want people making noise at six o'clock in the morning, so that's why they, that's one of the reasons why they go electric, just to let you know. We don't, we don't have a lot of complaints, I think the only complaints we really have here for the golf course are the residents in the fall time when we're blowing leaves. Uh, that's probably, and I try to limit that till seven o'clock, it's seven-thirty in the morning before we can blow, but you know, like right now, we have to spin the blowers up first thing in the morning, because the greens are loaded with, you know, with leaves, but.
Right. And, and I understand the electric ones are a little quieter, driver's fire, yeah.
Yeah, but mainly in the morning, we're, we're cutting greens, and those greens mowers aren't very loud. You know, so they're, they're not much of a, I don't think that's mu- not much of a noise issue.
I think, I think long-term, it makes some sense for us to start, uh, to, to at least take a look at the, the alternative, so.
Yep.
All right, anything further? Thank you, Ted.
Everyone have a nice day.
Me too.
Thank you.
All right, uh, Kevin McGee, Natural Resources.
Okay, we're um, got three things on the um, capital list here, um, the annual um, treatment of Lake Quanapug for weed control. Um, it's a um, total project request of thirty thousand dollars, but we did receive a grant this year for paying um, at least about half of this um, cost, it's a fifty-fifty grant. Um, and that will be um, covered by a state grant that we received. Um, this project here, um, of Lake Quanapug, we're in the process of doing a management plan. Um, so there, we should begin um, report from that in the next month or two. Uh, so there may be additional recommendations regarding the lake, which um, we'll have to be looking at funding, uh, potential additional funding for that. Um, what comes up and recommendations for that, um. And there's also a meeting with the, the subcommittee on Monday, um, there might be other topics they might want funded, um, so we may be talking a little bit more at the next uh, regular budget meeting, if there's any additional needs that that group sees, especially getting the rough draft of the report. Um, the other item we have is.
Kevin, Kevin, another question on Lake Quanapug, I think, something in the back of my head says that we had traditionally been budgeting about twenty thousand for that, uh, weed control, um, over, over time.
The costs have gone up, and actually, looking at the um, the estimates that we received, um, they're coming off a state bid. And I think their person who produced the um, cost estimates to us wasn't calculating correctly. Um, and they recently caught on to that. So we were actually, they're actually, they were actually five or six thousand dollars under what they should have been charging us based on the state bid request there, so I'm not sure how they made out financially on that, but uh, the cost, um, this reflects the true cost of the um, um, the um, state um, bid price for ser- for services there.
So this is the new number we should keep in mind?
Correct.
And uh, the other one, the other question is related to the contributions that Cho has been giving us, is this net of uh, of those contributions?
The three thousand from the um, I don't think, I think I just included the, nothing you mentioned, I think I just included the, the state grant in that, so the other would be a three thousand dollar um, um, additional funding from the um, Cho there.
I've been doing this too long, I remember that, that kind of thing.
It was twenty-five hundred and something.
It was twenty-five hundred and three, yeah, I think Gary McCandley got them to go up to another five hundred dollars, um.
They're trying to match their, um, if they had to pay taxes, that equivalent value.
Right, they, just for edification purposes, there is uh, a, an individual who bequeathed uh, money to Cho for his exact purposes, so this is, it's out of trust. Uh, Cho is re- required to fund us, to, to, to fund the, the lake, so because of the, the boathouse they have up there for their crew, crew teams.
Oh, that's interesting.
Yeah. All right, Kevin, next?
So the next one is, and it's been on the list for at least five years or so, is the uh, do I need to go on further? No, should I stop now? The compact um, utility tractor, um, this cost has gone up, um, eight thousand dollars.
A few years ago, what about Jeep?
Um, the supplier that we um, got the really good price quote from is no longer in business up in Middletown, uh, mistake, uh, tractor equipment up there. They're no longer in business, and they were providing. Providing a really good pricing to the town and stuff on things, um, way below the um, sticker price or the recommended price by John Deere and stuff. Unfortunately, they're no longer around, so we're back up to the, uh, got an estimate from um, another local dealer, and they're pricing pretty close to what the uh, recommended values and costs are from John Deere. So that cost of the tractor went up with all the components that we need to work out with. And the trailer went up two thousand dollars in the past year or two that we need to transport it with. So I think it's a thing of supply cost on top of timing here now. The, there is a definitely need for the tractor, especially with the brush hog and the augers and stuff there. The, the people walking around the field that used to reserve, there's higher concerns regarding ticks and stuff. If you make a loop around the field there, it's almost a mile loop, walking the, if you walk the edges, the both big fields and back there. So that's a lot of work for a person with a smaller, with brush hog to take care of and takes up a lot of time. Also, the OSHA is really cracking down on tick protection of employees. So having the guys up on a machine, not walking in the grass and stuff, doing the mowing, getting into this high brush. We'll help, help cut back on incident rates of lineman tick problem with the employees, because ticks are now as a activity being regulated or overseen by OSHA. We also have a couple of fields which we've been, which were overgrown, which now we're rehabbing back into fields, especially for pollinated pathways and stuff, which require yearly mowing. And they're about two acre, three acre plus size lots that we've, we're working here with. Another question's been asked before, is all the equipment available? And the past couple of years, we haven't been able to get anything or share anything with anybody. The equipments that's out there is all being used at the same time as the needs for the town with this type of operation, what we're doing with our program here. And we also need, like I said, the backhoe in the bucket part for portions of trails and old roadways, which become our heavier packed trails. Washing out where we need to create water bars and kind of regrow those out on a regular, more regular basis. And also, when we do get incidents of damage on trails by ATVs and stuff that have the ability to go in and smooth out the ruts, which will prevent injury and ponding of water for the users of these properties.
Kevin, we appreciate your tenacity and continuing to try to get this done. This might be your year. Particularly since I think this one clearly could fall under our consideration, open space, which, you know, which is one of the criteria, folks to be able to take advantage of outdoor spaces, parks enhancement, so. This, this might be your lucky year, Kevin. And frankly, the text of public safety or safety, worker safety argument is, if nothing else, bureaucratic creativity, well, necessity. We had an ocean inspection last year. That was one of the items that we were required to do was to put a tick mitigation strategy together and training for our employees, as well as recommended clothing and footwear and all that kind of stuff. So OSHA is definitely very interested in that, in tick prevention, so. I suppose the workers' comp folks won't mind either.
As indicated, yeah, definitely workers' comp, if we're, guys are doing work where we can be using a machine and we guy pulls out a back or pulls a muscle arm or something like that for using a hand, rented hand auger or something like that, and that pulls loose. The cost of, and the downtime of employees, Mitch can tell you, is just incredibly long and the costs are incredibly high that we have to maintain for those type of things. So any mechanical advantage that we can do to help protect employees is something that's definitely worth considering here.
Great. Thank you, Kevin. Any other questions for Kevin? Gary Duncan, thank you very much. Have a great day.
One other item, he has none on this one, but coming up in five, in three or four years here. Kind of carries on with your discussion you're having. Replacement of my ranger here, looking at probably three years out, two thousand twenty-five budget here. Looking at going with the conversation here, his buddy is fifty-five thousand dollars for electric pickup truck. Hopefully, the prices get better figured out and calculated, because right now it's just on a reserve basis and I don't think anybody knows what the true, true cost of it is right now until they get them into the dealerships and started selling them, but that is on the list here and something that I guess facilities needs to probably watch out for with putting installations for electricity and stuff closer to fifty Boston Street here for additional charging. And also, like, listening to with the community center thing there is glad to hear the potential of utilization of that community center generator at Town Hall South here. Been talking with Steve regarding that, a need for this building here with storms and this office being computerized now with all our functions here would definitely be, definitely benefit here.
Good. All right. Thank you for bringing those points to our attention. Anything else? All right, Kevin, thank you. Have a great day.
Thanks.
All right, next, let's take his leave. I hate it when your professional life gets in the way of your civic life. Information Systems, Tony, what do you got for us?
Yes, sir. I'm just going to go in the order of what's on the ClearGov, which I'm liking this ClearGov. Replacement PCs is the usual, that hasn't changed. Really, it's PCs hyphen laptops now lately. I don't have much data on how well these laptops are surviving, because it's really only been a couple of years. But we could just, you know, keep it status quo if that's okay. I think it's twelve a year, right? Next, I got, this is new. Replacing all the wiring at Town Hall. So the wiring here for the network has been here since I started, which was, is over twenty years ago. We'll say twenty-two, I've been here twenty-three, we probably installed the wiring first year that I was here. We're going to get that up to the latest standards and swap things over to the new wiring and pull out the old wiring. That's in there for that.
In there for twenty-four?
Yeah, yes, that's the quote I got. There should be a quote attached.
Fiscal year twenty-four.
Oh, yeah, 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 no, not, not next year. Munis Employee Self-Service, MJ said that that has already been approved with our.
That was part of the technology fund money and fund balance, so we'll make that adjustment on this.
Thank you.
And I know I asked this question in the past. You don't have, you don't want it in this coming year because you're still working towards education of people and how to use it.
I'm sorry, I missed that, I missed that.
You don't have this module installed at all.
Okay.
Oh, for the self-service?
Yeah, permitting going in, we've just implemented purchasing and we have the billing program going in, so I was hoping.
Right, you're doing it in phases.
Correct.
Yes. Next is another big one. This is new. This is probably long overdue of maybe putting some security cameras in the hallways at Town Hall, the counter at Town Hall South and the entrance at Youth and Family. Over the years, you know, there's been a, not too much, but a couple of things that happened that could have been good to have security. I also added a document on some reasonings why a business or municipality should have surveillance. You could read that, you know, whenever you want. We have this already, the same surveillance at the community center and at Public Works. So I know it works. Just something to think about.
How about the parking lot here at Town Hall?
Well, I didn't want to, well, I, I think the, I think communications downstairs does have a camera that somewhat points out there already. And they also have one in, near the elevator when you walk in. And I mainly stayed with only like the lobby at Town Hall to keep things, not having to drill into the building, the look of the building, that, that type of of thought process I had, so I didn't put anything for outside. I mean, that could be changed. You know, but I mainly just kept everything inside.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, can I ask a question?
Certainly, Veronica.
On the security cameras, Tony, would it be beneficial to also add them in the first selectman's office? I know occasionally the, the staff there are alone and you know, there could be, there, there have been in the past, but there could be additional issues with the public coming in. Is that worth adding there as well as count quirks?
I'm sorry, so the cameras in the hallway will cover all that. So you'll, you'll, yeah, you'll get the counter and in the selectman, you're going to get, it's like what's called a fisheye camera. You're going to get around the corner coming up the stairs and actually in the stairwell as well.
Oh, good.
Oh, yeah, there'll, there'll be a lot of coverage of just, they won't, they won't physically be in offices.
Thank you.
You know, yeah, I just didn't want to go that route.
Tony, follow up on Charlie's question comment. If you wouldn't mind putting together some, an additional quote for monitoring the parking lots. I think that may, that, that could be beneficial.
The corner of the building could get the parking lot in the front entrance, yeah, just.
Yeah, I'll talk with downstairs to see what they're already covering out there. And would you want something in the front of the building or is in the lobby down when you first walk in, okay?
I don't know, I would think the front corner of the building would, you know, it would really cover the parking lot, the front entrance, the piece of the green.
We could maybe get quotes for the entirety of everything and then cut down what maybe you don't need, so.
There's even kinds that you could put that are pan and tilt and they just keep automatically moving and they'll get a yeah, there's a lot, I'll, I'll talk to the guy that I worked with to see what he suggests. I don't think it would be that much more.
All right, so Tony, you know this question is coming from an old IT guy, right? What is it? What kind of storage you're going to need for the?
Oh, you know, I don't, if you look at the quote, there's its own, I think what he told me, it'll be eight terabyte server and it'll hold about thirty days of twenty-four seven data.
Yeah, that's what they usually do.
Yeah, it'll just keep overriding.
Overwriting, yeah, okay, good. Thank you. Anything further? Any question, any other questions from the friends at the Board of Finance?
No, I'm good.
Oh, no.
Oh, oh, you're looking at the screen, I forgot.
All right, Tony, thank you very much.
All right, thanks. Have a good one.
You too.
Matt, I'd like to request just a quick switch.
Absolutely.
One item, sorry, Janice.
I think it should be pretty simple since I'm here. The, I'm requesting thirty-two thousand dollars from the the bid list, the automobile bid list to purchase a vehicle to replace the red Prius that we now have, which is almost a hundred thousand miles. And the electrical system on the Prius is not working real well, the Public Works Department and the repair folks down there did some creative patching together of the electrical system, which requires that you split this little toggle switch before you start the car and then turn it switch, switch the switch again when you turn it off and it's definitely at the end of the road, so I'd like to request a replacement of that. Ideally, I'd like to go to all-electric. There's nothing on the state bid list that's all-electric.
Really?
Unless there's an updated version of it. The town cars actually would lend themselves very well to all-electric. Because nobody drives very far in terms of long distances. The cars are here at night, they could be easily recharged, so if there is an opportunity to do all, all-electric, this would be the type of use where that would make sense, but I didn't have a price for an all-electric car that I included in the budget.
Well, we've got a little bit of time.
Yeah.
I think it will work with the EV ready and exposed, right? And the state, the state is the one that's literally pushing the EV adoption.
Working off an old bid list and maybe they have some newer vehicles that are a hundred percent electric plug-in.
Wasn't the Prius you're using donated?
That's what I was told, yes, yeah.
And that's a few of what?
It's been around for a while, I don't know what the vintage is on it.
I mean, it has been.
We haven't been adding.
I bet you eight, ten years at least.
That's what I remember hearing.
So that was one of the first.
How is donated? It was a used car donated.
Yeah, so that was one of the first models to come out. All right.
It's not a real safe car, they, for example, the headlights flicker on and off if you happen to be driving. Which again, very rarely. Very rarely do you need to use the headlights, but occasionally, you know, it's a little disconcerting when the whole setting go off as you're driving down the road.
All right, well, that does become problematic this time of the year, though, because at four o'clock, you need light.
Just for safety.
Again, that car isn't really used.
Great, now we know that, now we're liable for that.
I don't use it at night anyway.
Okay, thanks. Thank you, George. Okay, ready, back to a couple minutes, a health break. Janice, sorry, we're just going to take a quick health break. I'm trying to jump over this.
You can do it. You're welcome.
Did? Okay, Engineering, Janice, thank you for your patience.
No problem. Good morning.
Good morning.
So before you, you have for twenty twenty-three kind of a rundown of the various engineering requests or documentation of projects that have other funding sources as well. The first one being the Falcon Road Coastal Resilience Project. That project we've, we're on the list at CAG for lots of funding for that project. And engineering is underway right now. And once we get to a point where we can submit a full application to CAG for DOT review, we will do that for hopefully a commitment to fund on that project. We just recently got a commitment to fund for the same funding source for the Nut Plains Road Reconstruction Project. Going down your list, next item for twenty twenty-three would be our annual sidewalk repair of fifty thousand dollars, which is typically budgeted in the general fund capital. Every year, we have more than our share of repairs to make to our existing sidewalk system. The nice thing now is with the Safe Streets Task Force project, included in that with the consultants' help, is they developed a whole database of where our sidewalks are, as well as a condition assessment for them, including our handicap ramps. So now we know we even have more work to do than probably the fifty thousand dollars could ever cover. Going forward, next item is chimney corners, coastal resilience. That was, I believe, already bonded. I think Mary Jane can maybe help me out on the cover, to cover that cost. That project is also ongoing. It's at preliminary design stage and I'm currently meeting with neighbors adjacent to the project to discuss the project's impacts on the front of their properties as, as raising the road will impact some of the adjacent property owners. So that one's moving along. And then the next item is road improvements. As you know, we've been putting away about five hundred thousand dollars a year. I think for some reason this got cut down to forty thousand dollars in bond approvals. Is that correct, Mary Jane?
Yeah, we had a math issue with the bonding last year and this was cut short. Uh yeah, we had a uh a math issue with the with the bonding last year and um this was cut short, um so. We'll be catching up in the next couple of years.
Yeah, so I so what I did was I. For for next year, we'll 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 make up the difference to the five hundred and then I pushed it out for, I think, one more year, um just to. Cover the full cost that we had estimated and this will be to really start addressing uh pavement needs throughout town. Um speaking to this is I'm looking to have Beta Group who had done our original um pavement management system through the Council of Governments. Um that system was up and running when I got here, but. Um I didn't, I couldn't find it in the system unfortunately, and so um I'm looking for them to come in uh with a. To get that system back up and running so we can bring it up to date and really drill down to the priorities of what roads need need. Uh either mill and overlays overlays or maybe even reconstruction to start utilizing um this uh. Funding that we've been putting aside for a couple of years. Um and then the next item is um Goose Lane Road Reconstruction, again, that's a lots of funded project. Um and you folks just approved the um. Engineering services for the design of that project at your last um Board of Selectmen meeting, so that that project will be moving forward a little more quickly, hopefully. And any question?
No, thank you, it's just the the clarification, though. On the the math error on road improvements for twenty twenty-three uh only at forty. Um this board, as well as the Board of Finance, had authorized a transfer uh from uh fund balance. Uh into uh road projects, we I think we put in another three hundred thousand or so.
Right, but I think we allocated that to other projects, correct, Janice? Yeah, we.
Right.
We had specific requests for the three hundred thousand, so this is separate.
Yeah, those. The three hundred thousand was, I believe, like approximately two hundred thousand just to cover drainage uh projects throughout town. Um as well as the monies for the um. Clabberd Hill Road Bridge improvements that were recently approved at around seventy-five thousand dollars um. And the monies for the materials we purchased to do the erosion project with the Connecticut uh Regional Water Authority up in North Guilford on Beaverhead, so. Those funds were for other purposes than um the road improvement here.
Right, but but those would have been in this budget request had they not not been able to fund them out of.
Correct, yes.
Right.
I'm saying, so in effect, we really have three hundred and forty thousand or whatever the number is.
If you include that, correct, yes.
So Janice, when you just mentioned drainage projects throughout the town, um when Tom Fillion was talking to us. He he was talking about some drainage um projects too, I guess they're separate, I mean, some fall under your. Jurisdiction, some fall under his?
Yeah, so Tom usually has um like a standard drainage project, um drainage line item. For uh maintenance issues where they may need to replace uh catch basins that are failed or. Replace tops as part of some of the paving that they may be doing. Um n- normally it's smaller projects that aren't really foreseen in the future that they have to to utilize for more of a maintenance purpose. Um these projects are more for complaints that we've received and we're doing either some studies right now to figure out. What the issues are and and maybe use as seed money even for possibly even drainage um studies that may need to be done, we have one area in the center of town we're looking at right now. And uh that drainage money would be possibly used for some seed money to get started on a larger project there. As well as some smaller drainage projects that I've gone over with Matt regarding um. Uh problematic uh areas that need need attention that haven't haven't been taken care of for a number of years.
Okay, thank you.
Anything further? Okay, Janice, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good morning, Kim, Building is next.
Uh Kim, are you unmuted?
muted, yes.
I do apologize regarding that, uh excuse me. Good morning, um I'm here on behalf of the Building Department. Requesting for a four-wheel drive hybrid vehicle uh that will be in the towns uh but, you know, they're planned for electric vehicles. Uh as the Building Department, we do not have a dedicated vehicle yet, I would like to thank the. The uh selectors for approving for a vehicle that we did get, uh one new vehicle, we haven't received it yet, uh they said it's supposed to come next week. Uh but this is for a second vehicle uh for it to build an apartment to have, as you all know, we do it between. Eight to ten plus inspections a day, five days a week and just having one vehicle is a bit of a hindrance, so if we can have another one, that would be fantastic for. Uh myself and also for my other inspectors.
Currently today, we're reimbursing the uh other inspectors for the personal use of their vehicles, correct?
Yes.
All right, uh do we have an idea?
For two of, for one uh does use the other vehicle.
Okay, uh do we have an idea of what we're paying uh out on an annual basis for those uh for that reimbursement?
I don't know.
We can we can get that number, right?
I can get the number for you, not a problem.
Okay. Um again, like I've asked of everybody, uh is there a possibility of uh hybrid type vehicles?
Yeah, this is what, yes, that is.
That is hybrid, great.
It is hybrid, yes.
Okay, any other questions? Kim, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, uh next up, uh Sonia Marino in Health.
Hello.
Hello, how many people did we uh get vaccinated yesterday at the up at Guilford Lakes, how many?
A hundred and forty-five and Saturday was two hundred and eighty-five, which brings us to four hundred and thirty in less than a week, first dose pediatric doses given to Guilford. Children and employees of Guilford Children.
Terrific, it's just uh so people know that uh. The vaccines for kids have not yet made their way to the private practices uh pediatricians yet. There's some question as to whether the Yale-owned pediatrician groups uh have it yet or not, but uh. Um the 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 prominent pediatrician here in town who was not affiliated, uh Rob Noffos group. Was not affiliated with Yale, still has not gotten access to the vaccine, so. And what about the CBS and the and and Long Greens, are they starting on kids yet or no?
Not that I'm aware of, no.
Okay.
My my daughter got vaccinated at CBS, so they have.
They have started, but.
Yes.
Thank you, Amy.
Are there still age limitations on the booster shot in Connecticut?
Uh eighteen and up. And and Lamont hasn't approved it, it hasn't been approved from CDC and, yeah, but it's about to be, but Lamont already approved it for Connecticut, as far as I know, eighteen and up.
I got mine.
They they just announced approval today, this morning, CDC announced.
Somebody.
Yeah.
It was an age issue, okay, good, good.
All right, well, that was a little that was a little diversion from. Yeah, yeah, so.
I did want to add, uh Matt, there is a booster clinic on Tuesday, the twenty-third. Um and and anyone who's in the public, regardless of the the new announcement for eighteen up is great, but no matter what, if you're involved with the public, teachers. First responders, they immediately get the the booster if it's been six months.
Well, I'm safe, I've got mine, so.
I walked in the right, ain't no appointment, listen.
Come on, dude.
Okay, uh so looks like you're looking for a second vehicle.
Yes, um pretty similar to the conversation that are the topic that uh Kimberly, our building official, just had. We are waiting for our car that the truck to come in, very excited, um we do only have one crowned. Car that's unreliable at times, so we do need to have two vehicles, two working vehicles for at least four of the employees that we have here. Um I do believe the food inspector does do mileage, then we also have the part-time Shirley Santaran and myself, I've been using my own car.
Okay.
To this point.
I hope you're I hope you are submitting uh mileage for reimbursement.
I will work on it, yes.
Okay, all right, and and this uh is a hybrid vehicle as well?
Yes, it is.
Thank you. Any questions?
No questions.
Great. Thank you very much.
No problem, have a nice day.
Have a great day, have a good weekend, try to get some rest, would you?
Yes, I will, thank you.
Okay, Town Properties, MJ, you're covering for Steve or is recovering from surgery?
Yes, yes, he is, so.
Is that a HIPAA violation?
So you didn't say for what? So obviously, if you have any more specific questions, we'll have.
I'm not gonna answer.
With the with him, but um he is looking to replace and it has been on the plan before, the two thousand and nine Crown Vet. Um with a Nissan Rogue. Um and the other twenty twenty-three request is to replace um his two thousand and eight Ford F-one fifty. Uh they're getting parts to to fix that uh truck.
He's been without a truck for months.
Yeah, so um you know, so so that's been added for this year.
And again, Nissan Rogue, is that is that a hybrid or not?
Not sure.
For twenty-five thousand, I would doubt.
Probably not.
All right.
Because that's a request we've had for a couple of years, so it's probably just still the same one.
Let's replace that with a hybrid vehicle. And the chances of a pickup truck could uh. At that price being, probably not, but we're just to ask him to take a look and see if there is anything that.
Certainly. Um so while I have the floor, I'll just um say that we still have included the items that are not funded. Um I have them listed as the selectmen, you you'll see those items, so if you ever need to. Add or change or whatever any of those um requests, we, you know. But right now, we just want to make sure. Well, we just want to make sure we keep things on the list, so not that we'll forget them, but that at least we can show that we.
Were aware of them, but we don't know when and we don't know how much and it wouldn't be honest to put a price on it when.
Right, so if any of you have anything to add.
Well, I do have one question, the Bittner Bittner Park Basketball Court. The those are not new, those are gonna be theoretically to replace the ones that we will probably lose at down at the um fire police, is that correct?
Refunded by American Rescue.
Oh, American Rescue has that on their list, too. Well, Parker Rec has something on their list for Bittner Park, so it may could have addressed.
I I guess I just want to be sure, because I think that's going to be something that some members of the public will be interested and concerned about happens.
Yeah, we were gonna ask the question if we could get something closer to downtown or.
Parker Rec has two basketball courts, three hundred and fifty thousand in twenty twenty-five.
It's probably the same, the same item, yeah. I'll double check that.
Because we're not gonna lose those courts anytime soon.
Right.
So.
I wonder if there's enough space. Uh with the tennis courts behind Adams, if there's enough space back there for.
Oh.
Basketball court. That's a parking there convenient.
We uh just. Just for. Uh your edification. When the pickleball courts were going in there, I received uh some significant feedback from the neighbors.
Traffic.
Relatives who. Noise. I can imagine that we're putting lights up over there, we're gonna wind up with some challenges as well. So and then there's also an issue with. As it turned out, wetlands over there, uh because Rick was talking about the subsurface stuff, so. Now. There is uh a a plan afoot uh up at Bittner. Um there's already a basketball court up there, all right, um. Supplied the skate park, it's between skate park and the uh pickleball courts. The skate park is. One that they're looking at moving the skate park to another portion. Uh of the park. Just pick up the materials because they're bolt-on, they used to take them off anyway when they did the skating rink up there. You guys recall, uh so so those are easily moved, so the thought is is to create. Uh two new basketball courts there, so the cost of that could be significantly less than what uh what we're we're talking about here, so. But again, I know it's up uh not not close to the center of town, not that there are a lot of kids who are riding their bike to the uh police department. Uh unless you're yeah within the neighborhood, uh but. We'll we'll continue to take a look and see if we can find all the locations, I think the trick the trick for us is gonna be, we almost have to purchase property. To get something as centrally located.
Yeah.
Is Carrie on this call?
No, but I'm sure it's on his list.
And I I know this is another favorite subject of yours, but I will ask, since it's listed under selectmen, um the sixty-five Church Street repurposing.
Right.
Anything new on that?
Uh yeah.
Okay.
Not yet, uh well, I'll tell you what, I I have reached out to um. Uh an architect who I'm familiar with. To gauge his interest in providing us with an opinion relative to. The contention that the the current structure represents mid-century modern and needs to be preserved. Which is really what the issue is.
So so right now, the HTC, that's their that's their final, I mean, that's their thing.
It's we are continuing to have to go, Janice is continuing to have negotiations with them around that at that point. So. I'm not sure we want a public war about that. Yeah, yeah.
I know.
So trying to literally we're gonna probably get an architectural uh opinion on that facility and the historic nature of that building. Anything else?
I'll just say that I'm.
Are we still recording?
Yes, because we're still on. Taking a lot of notes, so you know, make some adjustments with some of this, um you know, just the. Just the uh SCBA replacement of the AMP grant brings our uh general fund down by almost a half a million dollars, so. Um but you know, just starting off at two point four for this year, I thought was a great starting place. Um you know what I mean, we've been twice that other years starting off, so, but I'll make some adjustments to this.
That's the lowest we've seen for public works in years.
Yeah.
And you and you said there's still, I mean, the ARPA ARPA funds, it's not, I mean, can't be for everything, but there's still some hope that there might be some more.
Right, I'm not gonna move anything to ARPA until.
Right.
Me specifically, somebody specifically says, okay, that's what.
Yeah.
The items that we have in ARPA are things that we that is born in the Board of Finance, a lot of it's less. Um based on phase one of, so that's that's why we were specifically able to to say they were ARPA. Um but yes, obviously, you know, if we determine some more R, then we can we can do that too.
Great.
All right, anything further? Well, I'd like to thank our friends in the Board of Finance for uh for sticking through this and hope it was helpful to you, uh. Any comments or questions?
Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you for your participation.
Good, I see the CCM magazine just came out that you're a board member of Town and City, so I encourage everybody to have a good look.
Thank you, Bob, thank you.
I have one question, is the the ClearGov link, is that a live document, so Mary Jane, when you make your adjustments. Will that automatically appear on the link? Sort of like Google Docs?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, anything else?
Motion to adjourn.
Yes, in adjournment section.
Second.
Undebatable motion. We've got nine dollars, favor.
Hi.
All right. Motion carries, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Very good.